This is thirty, Monday, September the twenty-seventh, and I call the Winton Woods City School Board of Education meeting to order. In the absence of the President, Mrs. Rubliss, I as Vice President will be conducting the meeting tonight. In keeping with the CDC guidelines, we ask that everyone please wear a mask. We have some situations where people are in high state to become infected, so we ask that everyone wear a mask inside of the building. All of our buildings are completely masked. Our students and staff wear masks. Please rise with me and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Yes, she does. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. All right. Thank you. We have one board member that has excused himself. We do need people to wear masks in order for him to stay, so.
Do you have any here?
Do we have any, Mr. Smith, available?
My tablet. I'll turn it on to satisfy your needs.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Mrs. Denny, if she's going to wear a mask, could you ask Dr. Cufalotti to come back in? Oh, she didn't even. Oh, she's going to go. Okay. We're going to move on. Is that okay? Mr. Seymour, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Birdy?
Here.
Dr. Cufalotti is here. Dr. Johnson?
Present.
Mr. McGowan's? Mrs. Rubliss?
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda this evening is District Honors, Recognitions, Gifts, and Introductions. Superintendent Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam President, I mean Vice President, President. I'm excited about this guy, Mr. Andrew Locke. He's receiving the Fulbright Scholarship, and it was scheduled to be an August recognition, but he was hard at work somewhere else, so he couldn't attend. But I do want to say one thing that we have Mr. Omsdett who's actually received the Fulbright Scholarship award before. And in order for it to be done with justice, I'm going to have Mr. Omsdett come up and tell a little bit about it. And one thing that Mr. Locke, you didn't know, Mr. Omsdett says that every time he does something, you try to follow him. So he says he's getting tired of it, but he says, but every time he does something, you're in his way. So here's one more opportunity. And Mr. Omsdett, tell a little bit about Fulbright, what it means, and then about this auspicious award for our good friend, Mr. Locke.
Do you want me to come up here?
I'm coming up. Everything is to the mic, sir, so it can be recorded.
Well, thank you all so much for having me. I really appreciate it. So, yeah, I want to talk just a little bit briefly about the Fulbright Scholarship. So Fulbright is one of the most prestigious, rather, programs that education has to offer in the United States of America. It's over a hundred years old. There are many different types of scholarships that can be awarded to both students as well as educators. The program that I was a part of and now Mr. Locke is a part of is called the Fulbright Teachers for Global Classrooms. So just to make sure that everyone understands the weight of what this means, we are, to my knowledge, the only district in the state of Ohio that has two teachers now that are going to be a part of the Fulbright program for teaching the global classes. Each year, there is a yearly bucket that is open for applications for people who are interested in providing our youth, our students, a global education. We are passionate about a global education in this district, and as a result, with our partnership with the World Affairs Council here in greater Cincinnati and northern Kentucky, they offered me the opportunity, and then, of course, I talked to Mr. Locke about it in depth, and he decided to follow the opportunity as well.
Follow you? Okay. That's what I thought.
Well, you followed both of us.
That's what I thought. I'm just checking.
I can say that I believe in his cohort, only sixty-seven people in the country were chosen for Fulbright, and my cohort, only seventy-two people in the country, and that is out of over a thousand applications.
Awesome.
Which, mind you, the application process is very arduous. There are essays, letters of recommendation, leadership roles you have to already be in in your district. So not only to just be considered, but to be considered a finalist in this program is amazing. The program itself, it focuses on three different segments. The first segment is a ten-week course focused on graduate-level global education to try to incorporate that and embed it in our education for our students. The second piece is a global symposium that happens yearly in Washington, DC, where each of the sixty-seven members in Mr. Locke's class are going to get a chance to talk about their project they want to do to be able to improve their community, to be able to enhance their community as it relates to global education. And then the Fulbright Scholarship ends with a two- to three-week experience abroad, where you get to meet people in the Department of Education of countries in Indonesia, Peru, Thailand, India, wherever you're placed. You get a chance to have a week and a half to two-week cohort with a teacher in those communities, where you get to learn about the education system of that country. But then in addition, you get to exchange information about education systems in your country. And the idea about Fulbright is not just for this to be a one-and-done experience, but rather for it to be a working relationship and partnership between a district and another country to be able to enhance our relationships abroad. So sincerely, I want to give Mr. Locke a round of applause because it's no small feat that he got this award.
If you could stay up there, we're going to, if you come up, we'll get a picture.
Randy, did you mark me present?
Thank you very much.
Can I say a few words?
Absolutely.
Hi, everyone. I think it's important, I mean, Josh here pretty much explained the significance of this award, but one thing I want to highlight is that it's not just an award for me, but it's also for the district, because something that he mentioned is that this is something that will have a legacy and continue on through the work that we're doing. The other thing is, we need to make sure we're giving him the same coudus. Because of COVID, he did not have the opportunity to be, you know, awarded some of the prestige of going through the same program as well, so I think we should give Josh as well a round of applause. And that is all.
Mr. Locke, when we heard about this incredible opportunity and we knew that Josh had gone through, the person that was scheduled to present this information was Ms. Jackson, Drew Jackson. And when she found out that Mr. Omsdett had already gone through, she was thrilled that he had the opportunity to present it. So, thank you. We found you, Mr. Omsdett. I think Ms. Jackson did the research, and she was just happy. She wasn't going to come tonight, but since you're here, she made it. So, thanks again.
Well, I also heard that you knew that I would follow along, so you just waited to.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Killed two birds, one stone.
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much, guys. Mr. Locke, so we don't forget anybody, because we try to keep these in a family atmosphere. Who did you bring with you tonight? Anyone?
Yes, this is my partner, Mike.
Partner Mike, let's get a picture. Absolutely. This is a family event.
I'm glad my mom's stuck in traffic. She wanted to come, too.
So this is not a family affair.
Did you know this is being recorded, Mr. Locke?
I did.
Okay. All right. Fantastic. That's awesome. You guys are absolutely amazing. So I remember when we went to Intac in St. Louis, and I saw you guys jogging through the city. You remember that? And you were. Yeah. And you were right behind him again, Mr. Locke, so there we go. All right. This next, this next member of our team is absolutely amazing. She's wonderful, she's inspirational, she works tirelessly. No matter what you ask her to do, she tries to make it happen, and I think she's one of the most incredible people that I've ever met. And Ms. Hobbs, can you come up to the podium, please? So many of the people on my team, they go out and do well beyond the scope of what ODE says you have to do. They get additional certificates, they get additional degrees, and they move beyond the scope. And it just shows you that they have an internal drive that goes well beyond the process of what we talk about at Winton Woods City Schools. So I want to brag about Ms. Hobbs for a minute. She has earned the certificated, she's a Certified Education Technology Leader. She is an absolute CETL, okay? Winton Woods Technology Department, Ms. Rhonda Hobbs, Director of Technology. The Board of Education congratulates Ms. Hobbs on receiving a CETL certificate from the Consortium of Schooling Network. She is one of five technology leaders in Cincinnati to receive the certification and become a member of the program. Thank you, Ms. Hobbs.
I'd say a few words, too.
Sure. It's kind of a tough act to follow Mr. Omsdett and Mr. Locke there, but this past January, one of my personal goals was to gain the certification. After having twenty-plus years in educational and technology leadership, I wanted to ensure that my skill set was kind of like irrelevant, and my leadership was relevant to leading our staff and our students into 21st century skills. And throughout this time, I did a ten-week study course with a cohort across the entire state and took the exam, that was like a two-and-a-half-hour exam in Columbus in May, and actually gained the certification. Certification is good or valid for three years, and continuing education has to happen, and then there's a recertification process every three years. It was a pretty rigorous study time, but I feel good that I know that we're on the right track, and it was very confirming to me that we're doing the right things here in the district, so, thank you.
Ms. Hobbs, who did you bring with you tonight?
Me and myself and I.
Hold on. You brought somebody. Here he is. You don't want to leave you alone.
Not at all.
I've been trying to get these pictures for a couple of years now. Okay, the next recognition goes to our good friends, Skanska and Megan, who's here to representing their great team tonight. Come on up, guys, to the podium. Mr. D., can you join them, please, sir? So this is not Skanska, Megan, and Denny, it's still just Skanska and Megan. Skanska and Megan Construction donated $2,500 for the 2021 Community School Achievement Committee Awards. The Board of Education thanks them for their generosity and support of the district. So, take your turn, guys.
Well, it's hard to believe that it's already been four years since we initially partnered with the school district. It's been a long journey, and I know your journey's been even longer to get these beautiful new buildings, and we're thrilled that we could be a part of that, and we're thrilled that we can give back to this district in recognition of their academic achievements.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Jeff with Megan. Just, we've had a great team built between us and the school district, and we're glad to be a part of the community and help the community, and, you know, ultimately, it's about the kids that go here and having a safe place and to get quality learning. You know, I have three boys of my own that's gone through school, and I just, I know the importance of that, and I see that happen so well here at Winton Woods, so it's great to be a part of it. Thank you.
Mr. D.
When I, when I saw this, and Jeff will give me a hard time, because I asked him, I said, "What are you doing here tonight?" Well, it turns out that they're being recognized for something great, and I wasn't surprised in the sense that this is the kind of thing that this company, this joint venture, does. So Skanska Construction is a very large builder, multinational corporation. Megan is a small, local company that does a lot of business in southwest Ohio, very successful. It's based right here in Forest Park. So they're a partnership, and I wasn't surprised that they would, they would be generous in this way. They've been a real good partner to the district. They've had even special needs kids come over to the construction site to get a sense of some things that could further their IEP goals. They've had vocational programs available. They've done a lot of different things to support the district, not just with the construction management side of things, but also with just creating opportunities for our students, which is really what gets us out of bed in the morning, so I just appreciate their approach.
Yeah, and one of the amazing things, and I always want to make sure that the public understands this, there were several construction companies that we could have selected, but I think the biggest challenge, along with their partner SHP, they were able to build these buildings right next to each other, and Jeff Parker just gave me some information that the middle, the south campus was built actually seven feet away from the other building. That was amazing in its own right, and it did not disrupt education. So, again, if we would have had to move our kids from that space, we had no place for them to go. So they got the bid because they did exactly what they said they would do, and thank you, guys, for all your hard work. It's showing right here in our community, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Smith, and congratulations to our Fulbright Scholarship designee, Mr. Andrew Locke, teacher at the high school, and Mrs. Rhonda Hobbs, Director of Technology, on receiving the Certified Education Technology Leader Certificate from the Consortium of School Network. And we also want to thank Skanska and Megan Construction, who made generous donations. The Board of Education thanks them and for their generosity and their support of the district. We also appreciate the dedication and the sacrifice and the assistance to the students from all of our teachers and our administrators and our staffs and our mentors, the parents and the stakeholders that are in the district that pursue the achievement of excellence for our students. Thank you all very, very much. We appreciate it. The next item on the agenda is a five-minute recess, so we'll go ahead and go into the five-minute recess, and we'll be back in five. We're now ready to resume our regular meeting, and the next item on the agenda is public comments. But just before we go into our public comments, there are a few comments that were made at the last meeting that I would like to address, so I'm going to ask Mrs. Hobbs if she would come up first and talk to us a little bit about the Internet and the 5G.
Thank you for the opportunity to talk a little bit about 5G and kind of build a framework and understand what it is. So 5G is the latest network of wireless technology. It's used to transmit data between appliances like mobile phones and Bluetooth devices. 5G works by producing a type of energy called electromagnetic radiation. It uses higher frequencies than previous wireless networks, making it much faster and more efficient. Electromagnetic frequencies, those produced by 5G, create an area called electromagnetic fields, or EMFs. Some people believe that EMFs have negative health effects. Wireless technology is constantly evolving. Approximately every ten years, mobile companies release a new generation of wireless systems. Each generation is an upgraded version of the last one. In 2019, 5G networks were released. The term 5G stands for the fifth generation. 5G provides faster mobile communications. This is expected to support the increasing number of electronic devices and services, including self-driving cars, virtual reality appliances, telemedicines, remote surveillance, and telesurgeries. 5G works by using higher frequencies on the electromagnetic spectrum. The frequencies range from 3.5 gigahertz to several tenths of gigahertz. Before 5G was launched, these higher frequencies weren't used in mobile networks. They were typically used in devices like security scanners. It's also worth noting that electromagnetic frequencies are produced by anything that uses electricity. This includes microwaves, power lines, and computers. 5G also uses a method called beamforming, which sends data directly to devices. This is different from previous generations, which sent signals in all directions. According to the World Health Organization, there is limited research on the frequencies used in 5G. There is more research on the health effects of electromagnetic fields across the spectrum. However, the results are inconsistent. The benefits of 5G, 5G can improve the quality of video conferencing. I'm thinking about 5G with educational background here. So remember sharing the bandwidth in your home during the pandemic with two students virtually learning and a caregiver in a virtual meeting. With near-real-time response, 5G in education offers massive bandwidth, which enables students not only to learn how to use advanced technologies, but also how to develop and create with them, turning students from consumers of content to developers and creators of content. It also can strengthen and immersive learning experiences using virtual reality, which high bandwidth is needed. Content developers won't be constrained by the limitations of hardware and can potentially realize the creative visions in ways they haven't been able to before. So imagine teachers being able to guide students through the takeoff sequences of a space shuttle or flying through the human circulatory system, thus allowing children to see the lesson unfold right before their eyes and literally losing themselves in learning. So basically, I concluded from the research that I did in regards to this is, there are definitely some studies that are indicating that 5G does have some health benefits, but there is no conclusive data on it.
All right. Thank you very much, Mrs. Hobbs. Next, I will have Mrs. Denny come up and talk to us a little bit about communication. And she has a PowerPoint, so if you want to turn around and watch her PowerPoint right behind us, actually.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Johnson, and good evening, Board. Really happy to be here tonight. And give just a quick update on communication. I think that it's always good to kind of circle back around and highlight what platforms and tools we use to communicate with our parents, our students, and our families and community and stakeholders. So as most people know, we have a OneCall now system that we able to leverage for voice calls, emails, and texts. We do have a website, and a website's a window into the district, really houses the majority of all of our information. We are actually in the middle of redesigning it, and that should be coming out here in a couple months. We have a monthly Supercast, which is our superintendent podcast video cast, and that's done once a month on, just to update our community on different items that might be happening in the school district. We do have a digital sign on Kemper Road that we keep updated. We also have our wonderful Drew Jackson, our writer for the district. She writes all of our articles, which are in local newspapers and online as well. And then, oh, thank you, Rhonda. And then we have our calendar. It's a tradition at Winton Woods that we print a printed calendar, a physical calendar, and we send it home with families. So that happens at the very beginning of school. It has all the events for this, the entire school year.
Oh, the TV timed up. Yes.
It should pop back up. Oh, from the bottom. The next tool that we really utilize a lot of social media, and you know, from the perspective of the district, we definitely need to communicate in all different ways, because whereas someone is on social media all the time, someone else really just has their phone, they might not even be on social media at all. So we really have to hit all of, all of those communication points to make sure that we get to our, our community and our parents. So right now, we have Facebook, Twitter, LinkedIn, YouTube, Nextdoor, and Instagram. So we utilize all those, all those communication tools. And then lastly, I kind of just wanted to take the opportunity to talk about Family University. So it's the third year that we're, we're providing Family University, which is a, it's like a little mini-conference of sessions where we can, as a school district, give our parents and our community different kind of resources around just anything from health all the way to academics. So we, we leverage that opportunity in that event, and our next one is going to be on October 21st here at the north campus, and it will be in-person, and we're working on a whole list of resources and great information for our community.
All right. Well, and there's your.
And there it is. Let me see if I missed anything.
She just talked about all of those.
Yeah. Oh, and lastly, this is something new that we've done as well, which is, we have a translations website. So our community now, for very important information that comes out from the district, our top five languages are English, Spanish, Nepali, French, and Fulani, and we have all the important communications translated and put on this website. So our families just have to go to wintonwoods.org/translations, and it'll be right there.
Very good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mrs. Denny. Thank you, Mrs. Hobbs. Now we'll move on to our public comments, and the first person up with public comments is Bill Spielman. You have the floor.
Again, my name is Bill Spielman. I've lived in Green Hills for about thirty years. With the district, when they started the Chinese teaching program, we, we housed the teachers the first year. We didn't do it the second year, but we did it all the remaining years until the last teacher, and we didn't house her. I mean, we housed the Chinese students for two years. We had two boys one year and two girls the next year. We are looking at potentially relocating, so we start, I started looking into the schools, and I came up with some disconcerting information. I know that, so I've gone back and watched the board meeting since May, and I know we have thirty-nine honor students that did great, and academic excellence is important and shared accountability, and, and there's lots of good things we heard about tonight. But there's another side that I'd like to talk about. About three months ago, we were talking, in the board meeting, you were talking about adding a person on staff here that kind of managed the food area. They needed to upgrade that position, and that's, that's probably a good thing, if it's needed. And, but the statement that was made, it was probably a, maybe a marketing thing, but it was that nutrition is our mission. And I just want to be clear, education is our mission. Education is our mission. The research that I'm going to talk about tonight, I've gotten from publicschoolreview.com and Ohio School Report Cards at education.ohio.gov/districtwintonwoods, and I have copies I can leave with someone. And what I looked at was a 2018 and 2019 school year. Our rating in math proficiency was thirteen percent at the high school level, and that's as designated by Ohio and its state tests. The state of Ohio averages sixty-three percent. In 2015, we were greater than seventy-five percent and above the overall state, and in 2016, we were under twenty percent. And the state, the state average was still above sixty. In reading, our current proficiency is forty-one percent, as designated by Ohio and its state test, and that's at the high school. This isn't the other schools. The state average is sixty-four percent. In 2015, we were greater than eighty percent, and that was above the state average. In 2016, we were below forty percent, and the, and the state was just under sixty percent. That, that's not, and I'll leave, I'll leave, I brought three copies of these statistics, but that's, and then I looked at graduation rates. And then I looked at graduation rates. In the state, it's...
We need you to wrap it up, so...
Okay, state, it's 82%. Witten Woods is 78%. We were above the state average in 2018. So we can't afford to have another year of graduate students. If everybody has succeeded, we have to do something about this. So I will help in any way I can. Hopefully, you're all aware of this, but I just think we need to do something, or do something now. And I'll leave three copies up here.
All right, thank you, Mr. Spielman. I didn't mention that you had three minutes. I'm sorry for that. Yeah, I'm sorry, sorry, that's okay, I'm sorry. The next person on our public comments roster is Erin Washington-Childs.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Again, my name's Erin Washington-Childs. I just had a two-part question. So the first part is, a few weeks ago, there was an incident involving the principal at the high school and a female student after school, and it got a lot of attention on social media. So I wanted to ask a question as to whether or not there was an investigation into that incident, and if there was an investigation, was there a result or resolution that came from that investigation? And the second part of the question I have to ask is, in the future or presently, are there any protocols for those type of investigations? And are there any protocols for publishing the results of those investigations to the community at large? And that's it.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
I'm taking notes. All right, thank you, Mr. Washington-Childs. Next person for public comments is Helen Booker.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I just have a couple of questions. My first question is, is that the land there by Primary South Campus that was supposed to be used for the, what have you got, roundabout? I don't know what's going to happen with that now, but I was wondering if there's a walkway there? But the walkway needs to be improved, and I was wondering if someone could look at that and see about improving that? Because I kept my grandchildren a couple of days, and they walked to school, and they actually loved it. And I walked over there, and I have a broken ankle and didn't do too well, so anyhow. If someone could look at that, I'd appreciate that. And Mrs. Denny mentioned about a digital sign out here. There's no digital sign at the school South Campus. However, there is a sign in Green Hills, so either can we get a sign at the South Campus, or can you utilize the one at Green Hills for the same type of information? And I just have another question. The land behind the white building, does that belong to the school? You know, all that green field, I guess where they have ballgames or was a ball field or something, behind the white building? Does it belong to the school? And if it does, my question is, is it being utilized? And how frequently is it being utilized? And what is it being utilized for? That's all. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. The next person for public comments is Patricia Bender.
Good evening to everybody. I heard a little bit about 5G and the history of 5G and what 5G is, but it really didn't answer my question as to whether you were going to hardwire your computers. 5G is a new technology and has been shown and demonstrated to cause psychological as well as physical complaints, and I think that it has been brought up with a lot of information given to the school. So my question last month was whether you were going to hardwire your computers rather than using the Wi-Fi as a means to have computer technology in your school. You know, with the incident that happened that was on social media, which was quite damning to the school, to say the least, and nobody really knows really what happened, unfortunately, and as Helen and I were speaking about it, you know, one of the things that you may want to consider is children don't need their phones in school. We went to school, some of you are my age, and we didn't have computers, we didn't even have cellphones. And when I taught college, we took the cellphones out, and they were not utilized the whole time they were in school. So I think it would be something that would be considered or something you may want to look at. The other questions that I had was in regards to critical race theory, which I heard no answers on that one either. So I'm really hoping that this one is really considered and highly discounted as not being fulfilling on making our kids great here in Witten Woods. I was also wondering why the kids in Green Hills are not walking to the middle school? There is no reason that a bus has to go down Handle Lane at 35 miles an hour to pick up two children when they are five minutes away from the school. To me, as Helen and I spoke about, if you ask for parents to volunteer to do the sidewalks so the kids have someone there to help them cross the street or Witten Road, then I'm sure, as Helen has encouraged herself, would be more than happy to help out in any way you could. But I don't understand how the kids in Green Hills are riding a bus and wasting gas as well as trying to get to school, and it takes 45 minutes when you live two minutes away. The other question I have is on the voting ballot, I'm wondering why you have an emergency need for the ballot as to needing more money for your funds? It has emergency need as if there's a dire need for this money, and I wasn't sure, someone asked me why that's on there, and I really don't know. So those are kind of what I had to say, and I don't think there's anything else. How many seconds do I have left? I'm over.
Are you finished?
Oh, yeah.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you for your public comments. We don't tend to answer them in this meeting. We go back and during our work session, we discuss, find out the answers to your questions. Some of this, some of this stuff may be covered tonight in tonight's meeting, so if you plan to stay, then you would be able to hear maybe a little bit more about that, okay? Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is 5.01, which is the comments from our associations. And the first one is the Witten Woods Teachers Association. Do we have a representative here tonight from the Witten Woods Teachers Association? Okay, I don't see anybody. Okay, so the next person is for our, the Ohio Association of Public School Employees, and you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. We're members, Superintendent Smith, administrative staff, and community members. OC would just like to say that we are proud to be in our new buildings, and also wanted to say congratulations to Rhonda on the 5G. That's huge. We're excited to learn more about it, being the support workers so we can assist our students. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Ferguson. All right. The next item on the agenda is 6.01, the approval of minutes as presented. Board, unless you see any necessary changes for the minutes, a motion would be in order.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll second that motion.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Culetti?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 7.01, which is the Treasurer's Report for the Financial Statements for August 2021. Mr. Seymour, you have the floor.
Yes, for the month of August, our ending year-to-date receipts for the general fund were 14.6 million. Most of the, for the month, we received 2.1 million, which was mostly 400,000 from a real estate advance and 1.4 million from the state of Ohio. For the month of August, for our year-to-date, in the general fund, we have spent 2.7, 7.5 million, I'm sorry. In all funds, we currently have approximately 42.3 million, of which 24 million is the general fund for the major fund holder, and also still, we have approximately 10 million in our classroom facilities, still waiting to pay off our facilities. And that's basically a summary of the month of August.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. With no objections being heard, let the financial statements for the month of August be submitted for audit. The next item on the agenda is 8.01, which is the Treasurer's Recommendation for the Investments for August 2021. Mr. Seymour, you have the floor.
Yes, for the month of August, we earned in interest 19,185 dollars. The general fund held most of that at 18,000, and our building funds yield 1,170 dollars for the month of August.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. Board, if there are any, aren't any questions, we would like to entertain a motion at this time.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the investment report as precedent.
I'll second it.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for Mr. Seymour at this time? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Sure. Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Culetti?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is the Resolution for Permanent Appropriations for the Fiscal Year 2022. Mr. Seymour, back to you.
If I may take about five to 10 minutes to review the appropriations...
That's fine.
...for fiscal year 2022. The, overall, we have many funds that the district operates, not just the general fund. We have what's called enterprise funds, capital outlay funds, debt service funds, and special revenue funds. Of course, the general fund makes up 70% of our expenditures here in the district. For major special revenue funds, athletic, band, and music is around 280,000 for the coming year. Auxiliary services, which is our private schools, we receipt and spend on their behalf 365,000. We also have the Elementary and Secondary Emergency Relief Act, of which we will, we are anticipating to spend approximately 3.5 million this year. IDEA is for federal funds for the handicapped program, which is 910,000. Title I, 1.3 million. School quality improvement, 585,000, and teacher quality, 190,000. Those are some of the major special revenue funds that come through the federal government, which are specific for the purpose for which they are intended. As you know, the board has little discretion how these funds are expended. We're kind of told what they're to be used for and their purpose. Other major funds are permanent improvement. For this year, we're estimating 1.2 million. We're estimating to spend an additional 5 million to round out the building funds. And of course, food service has become a major fund here in the district, which is totally self-sufficient and estimated to approximately around $3 million this year. Of course, basically, we focus on the general fund when we're looking at the appropriations. And I just want to go over a little bit about the receipts. We'll get approximately 52% from our local taxes. We'll get around 37% from the state and from other state and other local. We'll get an additional 10% for a total of 48 million, 48.7 million this year. On a total, our taxes, of course, are dependent upon our total evaluation within the district. And this last year, you can see that this last year's reappraisal took the district back, just barely got them back up to where they were in 2010, when the real estate market started to go down, and then it started its way back up. So basically, the district right now is right back to where it was in 2010 on its total district value. And of course, that's 539 million dollars. We currently have voted mileage of 91.94 million. Of course, then it's got a reduction factor applied to it. As the value goes up, the tax levy goes down, and we're currently at 51.69. 44.19 mils is our general fund, 1.5 mils is for permanent improvement, and 6 mils is currently for bond retirement. If you think back a little bit, when this district first passed permanent improvement, they passed 2 mils. So the increased real estate value has reduced the tax collections down to 1.5 mils. Also, when we passed the bond, the bond was, three years ago now, it was 6.95. Currently, with the increased value, we're only asking for 6 mils, because we cannot collect more than we need to pay off the debt each year. So we're estimating approximately 25.8 million, including homestead and rollback, of 2.8 million for real estate taxes for this year. Our state funding, as you know, the Patterson Funding passed. Right now, Randy Seymour has decided we will stick with what we had for last year until we get more concrete evidence. So currently, the state funding formula is going to yield us 16.5 million. We also, this year, will get student success and wellness funds of 1.3 million. Additional categorical funding for transportation, special ed, and preschool of 300 and 180,000 Some of our other local receipts is we will, revenue in lieu of taxes, is we work with our municipalities when they do tax incentives to bring businesses into. Witten Woods, Forest Park, Green Hills, they in turn give us tax, those tax dollars that we lose, and we work on a tax incremental financing plan. Also, we still will have open enrollment of 1.6 million coming in for students attending our district from other districts. We still will have regular ed tuition for children coming into our district of about 800,000, rental facilities of 180, and then, of course, there's other local funds of 427,000. Some of our other state receipts, we'll get career in technology for 17,000. We get Medicaid reimbursement, which is very time-consuming for our special ed department, but we do get Medicaid dollars now for some of the services they provide for our children that receive Medicaid assistance. We will get catastrophic aid of 200,000. This is money we receive for highly expensive special ed children. We apply to the state, we report the cost of the educate child, and we get some reimbursement on that. And of course, we will have E-rate, and that is estimated at 50,000. But Mrs. Hobbs has been working on the new buildings and everything for E-rate, and what we've found is the timing of when we get to E-rate doesn't always fall in line with when we put the expenditures out. So we estimate, I think, Rhonda, don't we have about 200,000 out in E-rate? But we don't know when we will get that, so I estimate 50,000 for this year. And then casino proceeds, which everyone thinks will fund K-12 education, we're going to get 175,000.
Yeah, that's funny.
Excuse me. And how do we spend these dollars? We're currently spending around 1.1 million on our extracurricular program, and we are currently spending 72% on our instructional program, and then on operations, about 25%. Operations are custodial services, treasury services, administration, transportation, facilities and maintenance, and then, of course, instruction and extracurricular, we consider to be direct expenditures for our classroom instruction program. So basically, for this coming fiscal year, we're estimating 31 million for salaries, 11.4 million for benefits, 9 million for purchase services, 1.7 million for supplies, very little in the way of equipment of 97,000, and then other expenditures are 728,000. A big chunk of the other expenditures, people might wonder what is other, we actually have to pay our Hamilton County Tax Collection Department approximately 400,000 dollars for collections of real estate taxes. And total expenditures, then, you can see, we're estimating to go up proportionally over the years. I think they basically held constant. One of the bigger increases this year, we did have an increase in our healthcare program of 7%. And so what's included for salaries and benefits is all the negotiated salary adjustments are included, staffing reallocations... Staffing reallocations, healthcare had a 5.6% increase, and we did get an eight point, well, a 1% decrease in our dental program. Other non-personnel adjustments for the year, through the Cut Patterson, we no longer will receive nor pay out for community school, Ed Choice, John Peterson scholarships, or autism scholarships. As you can see, this is about 3.2 million dollars that we will not receive nor pay out. What they used to do was pay the district those funds, and then I took and paid them out to those people that applied for those. They no longer flow through the local public school districts. They're going to go directly to the instruction, the, the establishment that's teaching the child. And then also, our expenditures will increase by student success and wellness because the Cut Patterson said the things that you used to buy out of those special funds, you must now buy out of our general fund. So we have included those expenditures back into the general fund. And then basically, our budget for the year is we're going to start with 16 million, receive 48 million. Our budget is estimated at 56 million, leaving us with around 9.4 million at the end of the year. Now bear in mind, this is a budget. I'll guarantee you, we will end up better than that. But we do have to budget for unanticipated things, and we have to budget for what we do know could happen for the year. And then at a later date, when we hopefully get better concrete information on the new funding formula, I'll bring the five-year forecast back. As you know, we used to, every year, we've done the appropriations and the five-year forecasts kind of together. But I would like to wait on the five-year forecast because that's more critical in our financial planning than just our budget for the current year. So with that, it's just a little background for you to go ahead and take a look at the approval of the 2022 appropriations resolution request.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. That was very informative. Board, a motion is in order.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the permanent appropriations for fiscal year 2022 as presented.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for discussion for Mr. Seymour or any observations? I would like to say I appreciate the graphs. They make, the money makes sense to me. You know, when I can see the numbers and the graphs, it makes it make sense to me. So not being an accounting person, I appreciate the graphs, the numbers, you know, sometimes can get away from you. So thank you, Mr. Seymour, for doing that for those of us who are more visual. Okay? All right. Seeing that there are no other observations or discussion, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Sure. Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Culetti?
Aye.
Mr. McAllan?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 8.03, which is the transfer of interest earnings from one fund of the 0.1, 010, I'm sorry, classroom facilities to the Fund 004, building fund. Mr. Seymour, it'll kind of go right in line with what you were just explaining to us, so if you will, you have the floor.
Sure. As you know, you passed a resolution about six months ago that, saying that if you wanted to use, utilize the interest earnings off of your building fund. When we sold the bonds, of course, you can invest those funds until you need them to meet your, liquidate them to meet your obligations. And when we passed the resolution, we had approximately 3.2 million in local interest earnings. And in order to spend those dollars on the buildings, as you spend them, you have to transfer them out of the O-10, which is classroom facilities, into your O-04, which is your local building project. And Mr. Denny requested 500,000 on the first transfer. And at this time, we're looking at trans, asking the board to transfer 300,000 to meet some additional local initiatives on the buildings.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. Board, a motion is in order.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the transfer of 300,000 dollars interest earning from Fund 010 Classroom Facilities to Fund 004 Building Fund.
It's been motioned.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for discussion? Thank you. Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Culetti?
Aye.
Mr. McAllan?
Aye.
And Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Seymour. The next item on the agenda is 9.01, is the reports of the superintendent. Mr. Smith, you have the floor for school reports.
These the policies?
Well, 9.01, 9.01 is school reports, and then 9.02 is?
Yeah, Ms. Bray. Ms. Bray? For, we're just going to give you information regarding exposures and quarantines. And then I have some additional information for the event on October 15th.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Tanya Bray, Director of Student Services. I'm just here to give an update regarding students in their exposure or their positive COVID and also quarantine of students. So to date, as of September 25th, we had 31 students who were either exposed probable or tested positive. So those students needed to be isolated, and then we had a total of quarantined students, 85 students across the district as of September 25th. And this includes athletics, classrooms of such that would need to be quarantined due to the exposure.
Thank you, Mrs. Bray.
Are there any questions?
When, when students are quarantined, are they quarantined on campus or they're quarantined at home?
They're quarantined at home. So we follow all the CDC guidelines or recommendations from the CDC. And so, just so that you are aware, regardless of the vaccination status, our staff and students are required to wear masks.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else have any questions for Mrs. Bray? All right. Well, thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Smith, the next item on the agenda are the first reads of the new and revised board policies.
Well, before I do that, Dr. Johnson, I'd like to go back to the school reports. There is a, on October 15th, we have our yearly tailgating experience. It's the last home game of the season. And we hope that people come out and celebrate with the children for their, their last home game. And it's also a grand night as senior night. So you'll get a chance to see how many seniors participate in activities. There will be kids there from cheerleading, band, and also football. So you'll get a chance to see that these kids are not just part of the student operations as far as academics. They participate in other activities, and some of these kids have been doing this since the beginning. And they've stayed with it, kept their grades up, and I think it's exciting to see them walk across the field with their parents, showcasing that, hey, I'm a warrior all the way through. So, hope you can make it.
Thank you. All right. Now we're ready to move on to 9.02?
Yes, ma'am.
Which are the first reads? You have the floor.
These are all first reads, and all these first reads are basically about finances and property. So the first one is the post-influence of compliance for the tax exempt and tax advantage obligations, and that's Policy 6146. Policy 6144 is finances and investments. Policy 6220 finances again, but it's budget preparation. Policy 6600 finances deposit of public funds, cash collection points. Policy 7540.02, property web accessibility content. Policy 6114 finances cost principal spending, federal funds. Policy 6325, federal grants. 7450 is property inventory, and finally, Policy 7455, which is accounting systems for capital assets. So these are all policies that, this is your first attempt to review the policies, board, and you will, we will bring them back next month for your vote.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. There are a total of nine policies here, as Mr. Smith has said, and we will vote on them at the next board meeting. So make sure you read them, ask any questions at our next meeting, work session, or send to Mr. Smith. So the next item on the agenda is 9.03, which is the facilities update, and
Mr. Denny?
Oh, Mr. Denny is here, or Mr. Denny, our Executive Director of Business Affairs. You have the floor. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Dr. Johnson. Good evening, everyone, again. Hope everyone's doing well this evening. Appreciate the opportunity to provide a quick update on where we are in our facilities master plan, as well as specifically the new campuses. We are approaching final completion here, which is really exciting. I believe in the guaranteed maximum price contract set, as you heard Mr. Soto reference earlier, I've set now, three years ago, is November 3rd or 4th, I think it's November 4th for this campus. So we're, we're coming up on it. Still work left to be done. You can see there's still dirt piles and, no, we're not finished. So there's a lot of work to be completed. That question comes up a lot, but there is still things, site work, not, not, not building work, but site work to be completed. So at the north campus, you can see that we do have two of the four. Final parking lot's done. There's 125 spaces out here in front. That is due to be line striped very soon. There's an alternate that the district was very pleased to be able to purchase with the board's support, Mr. Smith and Mr. Seymour's support, that has another 56 spots, and that's closer to the stadium. There's 56 spots coming here in front of the middle school, and then there's another 35 spots coming in what's called the bus loop. 35 of those, excuse me, can be used during the day, and then there's 20 bus lanes, and then another 35 spots can be used in the evening. So all told, I think we'll have close to, without central site, about 400 parking spaces, or with central site, excuse me, about 400 parking spaces to use, which is a little more than we used to have, so we're happy about that. But that makes sense. This building is about 50% population-wise larger and about 50% square footage larger than the previous building as well. So that, that all sort of stands to reason. At south campus, the parking lots are actually completed. Line striping is completed, so we're maximizing our spots down there. And if you ever get a chance to go down there and take a look at the, the bus loop, it's also the, the playground for children to use during the day because it's not used by buses, obviously, in the middle of the school day when recess takes place. It's fantastic. They did a really nice job. Both from a design standpoint and from a constructability standpoint, finishing that work. We are, however, looking to add, and that was one of the things that you just recently were asked to approve, use of some more project interest dollars. And that's a, a good-sized chunk of that money is to fund additional parking spaces at south campus. The staff is larger than originally forecasted. We have more parents driving their children to school now than the original traffic studies showed. They were done by our civil engineering groups. They, they did not forecast this number. We think that might be tied to COVID, and that less parents are taking advantage of the transportation being offered. If you draw a one-mile radius around the school, all of those students are expected to walk in, except for those that would be forced to cross Wenton Road. We don't ask students and families to cross busy streets. That's one of the caveats in our one-mile radius. State requires it to transport everybody within a two-mile radius. But as a result, we just have more traffic. And so one of the things we'd like to do to help alleviate that pressure is not only taking advantage of the Conca Drive entry for buses only, and only in the afternoon, and only on the way in, they still exit out the front, but we'd also like to add parking spaces. So all of that meandering thought process to say, we are going to be adding about 44 more parking spaces down there. There's 189 currently there. We're going to add about 44 more. And again, some of that interest money is going to be invested in that. Trying to think if there's anything else I missed. Mr. Smith asked me to make sure I touch on some of those points. Is anything, Mr. Smith, you'd like me to make sure I mention?
Just that, I know that you guys have heard incredible reports from Mr. Denny for, seems like from 100 years, right? But what I'd like to, like, what I'd like to add, very soon, he's going to start giving you a comprehensive report about what's going to happen with the property and what's going to happen with the existing intermediate school. So that we can keep the public informed about every step of the way. Again, to all of our neighbors in Green Hills, thank you for being patient during the construction time. You were absolutely incredible, especially the houses that sit right by the construction site. And to our neighbors in Forest Park, thank you very much for all of your support. Just making sure that we followed our plan, and we did not create too much of disruption in your life.
Have to, have to second that. Thank you, Mr. Smith, for bringing that up. Yeah, our, our community's really been fantastic partners in this work.
We, we had the pleasure of reading stories about school districts that were building buildings close to residence homes, and there were some nightmares, and I am happy to say that with your leadership and your contacts with the community, we did not run into any issues. So, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Denny and Mr. Smith, and of course, the board. We appreciate receiving this information. He didn't mention it, but it is an update on our website, you know, with all the information that he shares, and there's updates on the progress of the buildings and what's going on, but we really appreciate it. It's exciting to have two new buildings in our, in our district, and the learning environment just changes exponentially when you have the right, you know, equipment and things to, to work with. So we, we really appreciate that. Thank you so much. Okay, the next item on the agenda is 10.01, which is the superintendent's recommendation for personnel schedules. Superintendent Smith, you have the floor.
Ms. Wilson?
Good evening. Before you, you have schedules, A, resignations, B, certificated staff, C, support staff, D, supplementals, and schedule E, leaves of absences. If you would, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but we ask that you approve them as presented.
Board, if you don't have any questions, a motion is in order to approve the personnel schedules for A, B, C, D, and E.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the personnel schedules as presented.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Culetti?
Aye.
Mr. McAllan?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. Thank you, Mrs. Wilson. The next item on the agenda is 10.02, which is the resolution for National Principals Month for October 2021. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, we have some incredible principals who work really, really hard. And it doesn't say anything on here about National Assistant Principals Month, but those guys are a team. They work very, very well together. I know that the public was really, really concerned about the beginning of school and how buses did not actually, the, the configuration just wasn't right, and I know Mr. Denny just mentioned about how many more cars we had into play. Those principals and assistant principals stayed many, many hours way after the mark to straighten it out, to get it corrected. We're still working because even though it's much better, their job is, they're saying we want to refine it until it's perfect. So they are an incredible team. They give you the hours, they give you the time, they do not complain, and they're really, really, really good about serving your children very, very well. So it's great that there's a proclamation for a National Principals Month, and I believe, Dr. Johnson, you're going to take the floor and read the proclamation.
I'm going to read the proclamation, and after I read the proclamation board, I will entertain a motion to, to pass this. It's proclamation for National Principals Month, October 2021. Whereas each year, the month of October is designated National Principals Month in recognition of principals, assistant principals, and other school administrators for their steadfast commitment to ensuring that every child receives a quality education. And whereas principals and assistant principals are responsible for the day-to-day operation of their school, which includes leading the instructional programs, acting as disciplinarians, managing managing educational initiatives, and building relationships with students, teachers, parents, community partners, and others to achieve excellence. And whereas principals and assistant principals work diligently to establish a positive tone for their school and provide a supportive and safe school environment where students learn, grow, and thrive. And whereas, we are very proud of our principals and assistant principals, and sincerely appreciate their ongoing efforts to inspire success and a lifetime of learning in Wenton Woods City Schools, and also to promote the importance and value of public school education in this community. Now therefore be it resolved that the Wenton Woods City School District is pleased to join other school boards of education across the United States in proclaiming October 2021 as National Principals Month, and encourages the citizens of the Wenton Woods City School District to join in the celebration of National Principals Month by thanking all school administrators for their care and concern they show for our children, adopted this 27th day of September 2021. So board, a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution, National Principals Month, October 2021 as presented.
I'll second that motion.
It's been motioned and seconded. Is there any questions for discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Kupuletti?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on our agenda is 10.03, which is the Resolution for National School Bus Safety for the week of October 18 through the 22nd, 2021. Mr. Smith, back to you.
Yes, Madam President. I think one of the things that I'd like the public to recognize, getting kids to school on time is important, but we have to take a lot of pride in getting our kids to school safely. Okay? We have tried to make adjustments to routes. We have been very successful with it. I think Mr. Denny has picked up the log and threw another log in the fire to be the Assistant Transportation Director, among many things. I think me and him did some tag teaming on routes, and we were amazed because it worked. So at this point, I'd like to personally thank the drivers for their dedication and their commitment, the office workers, everybody who plays a part with that, because that is a huge job. And I think that the country recognizes that there's a bus shortage, as far as drivers are concerned. I'd like to give special recognition to one of our colleagues, Ms. Wilson. She is our HR Director and our legal advisor, but she also drives the van part-time. So I think it's just an amazing feat. And I know Tanya Bray is itching to get her van certification as well, because she keeps asking, is the test hard? And so, but I think it just tells you that people step up. I got on, I actually got on one of the buses, and I said, you know, we were just frustrated because the routes weren't working right. And I started it up, and then I turned it off, because that was going to be a disaster. All right? But we have some very talented people, and they've come together to figure out, how do we make our district something very unique? When we talk about the shortage of drivers, we will not have that shortage, because they're committed to make it work for every kid in the district. So special shout-out to the bus drivers. Everybody in the Transportation Department, you are absolutely wonderful.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Before we entertain the motion, I'm going to ask Mr. Birdy if he would read the resolution for the National School Bus Safety Week.
Absolutely. Proclamation, National School Bus Safety Week, October 18 through the 22nd, 2021. Whereas the Wenton Woods City School District Board of Education recognizes the critical and important role that bus drivers are entrusted with on a daily basis, and whereas the Wenton Woods City School District Board of Education commends the dedication of these drivers who provide safe transportation for the students and staff members of our district, and whereas the bus drivers demonstrate a positive role model to reinforce the importance of education and support for family, schools, and community, and whereas the Wenton Woods City School District Board of Education, as a stakeholder in the educational development of these children, expresses its appreciation and support for the drivers and staff of the Wenton Woods Transportation Department. Now therefore be it resolved that the Wenton Woods City School District Board of Education proclaims the week of October 18 through the 22nd, 2021, to be a week of sincere appreciation for the important role of the staff of the Transportation Department of our school district.
Thank you, Mr. Birdy. Board, a motion is in order.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution, National School Bus Safety Week, October 18 through 22nd, 2021, as presented.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Kupuletti?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 10.04, which is the Second Read of the Replacement and Revised Board Policies. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam President. The recommendation is to approve the Second Read Replacements and Revised Policies as presented. And I know that I call these numbers out, but it's very important that when Waycross is here filming, the public understands and knows that we're actually working on policies and revising and updating, so they don't think that we're just moving along. These policies are very relevant to what happens today. So the first policy is 1623, Section 504 ADA Prohibition Against Disability Discrimination in Employment. Policy 3123, Section 504 ADA Prohibition Against Disability Discrimination in Employment, professional staff, the first one was administration. The next one is classified staff, and that's Policy 4123. Policy 1422, Administration, Non-Discrimination and Equal Employment Opportunities. Policy 3122, Professional Staff, Non-Discrimination, Equal Employment Opportunities as well. The first one was administration, and the last one is classified staff, 4122, Non-Discrimination and Equal Employment Opportunities. Finally, Policy 2240 is Program Controversial Issues. Policy 8500, Operations Food Service, and Policy 8510, Operation Wellness.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Board, there are a total of nine replacement and revised policies, and a motion is in order at this time.
I'll make a motion to approve the Second Read Replacement and Revised Policies as presented.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or observations or discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Kupuletti?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Smith. The next item on the agenda is 11.01, which is the Board of Education Reports for Legislative Reports. Mr. Smith, do you have any updates at this time?
Well, the main, the main update, Dr. Johnson, is districts deciding to wear masks or not masks.
I was going to bring that up. Thank you.
And those are actually very controversial in some districts and some communities. I'm happy to say that the parents are well-informed, and they are very compliant, as well as the students and staff. So when Mrs. Bray gave her incident report, our COVID numbers are absolutely lower than most districts our size, because we are working diligently to be compliant about wearing the mask every day. Kids don't really struggle with it. We don't have disciplinary issues about it. And I really wish that my colleagues across the state had the same opportunity to kind of vet it and say, this is what we need to do in order to keep our students safe. Unfortunately, there are some misinformed, misinformed people about what it means. I think a couple of people mentioned something about, well, I received the vaccine, but I got COVID anyway. And the vaccine was never designed for you not to get COVID. It was so that it wouldn't just devastate you if you did, just like a flu shot. So I think the public needs to be a little more aware about what the vaccine does, but it protects us, and it protects us from other people and vice versa. And the mask actually helps support that notion.
Thank you. That was the main thing that I seen in the legislative.
It's up there at the top of everybody's conversation, to mask or not mask. There are some parents that are having some resistance, though, because their piece is, my child went on quarantine, and this is the second time, and he still never tested positive for COVID-19. And that's why we have the other order where, wear your mask, and then some kids are actually in a different situation where they are going to be just checked for, just to make sure that they are okay, you know, for signs and symptoms.
That is, that is the biggest hot topic across the state, actually. And the last thing that we heard from the governor is he was trying to keep from having to make a mandate, make it optional for people. But that was about the only thing that I have. Thank you, Mr. Smith. The next item on the agenda is the Great Oaks, 11.02, which is the Great Oaks Career Technology Center Report. Mr. Birdy, I did see something in our email, but is there something that you would like to add to that?
Yeah, just real quickly. They did do a ribbon-cutting ceremony out at their Laurel Oaks campus last month. Governor Mike DeWine actually showed up and his wife, and he spoke at it. Megan Construction, I think, was involved in that, that renovation out there at Laurel Oaks as well. It was a great time to go see the campus and what they have done with it.
Fantastic.
They weren't quite finished yet, but it looks, it looks great. There were two Wenton Woods students who were recognized in the Spotlight on Students from the Great Oaks. And that one was Jalen Brown, who is currently working in the E-Commerce Department at Kroger's, and Davion Cummings, who's an industrial diesel mechanic who has a job placement at Titan Transfer. So with that, I did give you the other, Mr. Snyder's report, and some other documents related to Unity and Diversity Committee, and legislative reports as well.
Yes. Thank you very much. That's very exciting to see our students being highlighted at the Oaks. It's very exciting to see. So thank you, Mr. Smith, for the legislative update, and Mr. Birdy, for the Great Oaks update. The next item on the agenda is 12.01, which is motions and recommendations, which is the contract salary of the Superintendent Board. A motion is in order.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the salary of Mr. Anthony G. Smith, Superintendent to be 163,200, 163,200, effective August 1, 2021.
I'd like to second that motion.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Kupuletti?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 12.02, which is the salary of the Treasurer. Board, a motion is in order.
I'll make a motion to amend the salary of Mr. Randy L. Seymour, Treasurer, to be 141,000, effective August 1, 2021.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Seymour, please call that vote.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Kupuletti?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously as well. The next item on the agenda is 12.03, which is Board Cancellation of Special Board Meetings. Board, a motion would be in order.
I'll make a motion for the board to cancel the special meeting of October 11, 2021, at 6:30 PM, and the special meeting of October 18, 2021, at 4:00 PM.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for discussion?
Madam President, I'd like to add one thing.
Yes.
I know that there were people from the community that wanted to get some answers to questions that they had, and we will try to do something different to make sure that we don't have to wait until the next board meeting in the end of October, to get back with them, to let them know. All right?
It might be possible, I mean, this might not be the time to discuss this, but it may be possible that we could do like one call or something-
Yes.
-you know, to get that information out to them quicker.
That would be good.
We usually talk about those things during our work session, and then, you know, vet it, and then bring it back to you. But it is a better idea not to wait for such a long time. So we appreciate that, Mr. Smith. Thank you. If there's no other questions or discussion, Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Kupuletti?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. And that vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 13.01, which is comments from the Board of Education and Superintendent and Treasurer. So, Mr. McGowan, we can start with you.
Just, you know, I think we're having a fantastic year. I couldn't be more proud of the administrative staff, the teachers, and everybody involved. And, you know, I appreciate when she comes up and talks about the COVID, you know, the numbers that we have. I appreciate when Mr. Smith talks about that we've got less numbers because the kids are being masked. So, you know, I think we're doing the right things, and congratulations to the staff and the administrative staff.
Thank you, Mr. McGowan. Dr. Kupuletti?
I'd like to also thank the staff and the administrators for their hard work getting this new year off the ground. Any problems that we faced were solved by the hard work of people like Mr. Denny, including the busing situation. And I'd like to thank the community members who came and asked questions, and for giving us the opportunity to address your concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kupuletti. Mr. Birdy?
Couple of things. I'll touch on some things that were said tonight. I know we had one of our public comments related to nutrition is the mission. And we understand education is the mission, but we have a lot of children in this community that go hungry on a regular basis. So if you're hungry, it's very difficult, I think, for the children to focus on what they're supposed to be doing and what they're learning in the classroom. So that's the idea behind that. We commend Mr. Doctor and his team for everything that they've done, the bus that goes out in the summertime and delivers meals to children that maybe otherwise would not have food. So we understand education is our mission, but we also think that nutrition is the mission is an important thing that this organization provides for our community. There was a question about the emergency levy. Emergency levy, and Mr. Seymour, I'll ask you to contradict me if I'm wrong here. An emergency levy has a finite time period. A continuing levy is indefinite and will continue on until there would possibly be a vote to get rid of it. So the emergency levy would have a finite 10-year period, five-year period, something like that. It's not, it's not indefinite. It doesn't go on indefinitely. I think something that Mr. Seymour said during his presentation, I don't want to, I don't want it to be missed. As the valuations in the community have risen, the tax dollars don't necessarily to the district increase with those valuation increases. The millage changes. It's reduced. The district has not had an operating levy increase since 2009 was the last time we had an increase. We did have a levy passed. We had one of the emergency levies that was passed in 2009. It was getting ready to expire in 2019, was renewed. Wasn't increased. It was just renewed at the rate that it was set back in 2009. So just wanted to make sure that we got a little bit of that out there, so people understood what was going on. Other than that, thank you for the, thank you to the staff, bus drivers, administration, everybody for what they've done. Mr. Denny, the buildings are fantastic. We, I know everybody, everybody is excited about this. So, and with that, I'll stop.
That's fine. That's fine. Mr. Seymour?
I think Mr. Birdy touched on it. The reason for emergency levy is that it will be for a five-year term. And at the end of five years, that gives the community the chance to decide if they want to renew it or not. Also, it gives them an opportunity to see if they agree with what we use the additional $3 million for. The five mils, the levy will generate approximately $3 million for the district annually. And as Mr. Birdy said, we haven't had an increase for general operating. You have to ignore the bond, because we can't use the bond millage on operations. But we haven't had an increase in operations from our taxpayers since 2009.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour, for clarifying that. Mr. Smith?
Yes, Madam President. We have a survey out there, and it's opening of the new school year, and we hope that people take the opportunity to complete the survey. We did the survey a little- We did the survey a little differently this time. We asked for you to give an explanation of something that you may like, something that you may be disenfranchised with, so that we can correct it. There's also a section where if you want us to contact you, we will contact you personally, at least I will, and I will have a conversation with you on phone or in person to figure out how we can make the situation better. The last one for me is a little controversial, and it's about the conversation about TikTok, all right? Where people make videos about various things. There are TikTok videos out there all over the country. They have hit Ohio, they have hit Cincinnati, and it's talking, telling, and encouraging young people to remove soap dispensers from the bathrooms. Dismantle toilets, dismantle sinks. Keep in mind, my anxiety is a little different because these buildings are new.
Yes.
And we cannot comply with the CDC if the soap dispensers are dismantled. So the consequence for dismantling soap dispensers and toilets and sinks is going to be big, and I just wanted to let parents know that if your children are engaged in such activities, they should refrain immediately because it's actually a deterrent to what we try to do in our district.
And sort of a zero tolerance.
This is, this one, we talk about zero, and they're negative numbers, this one's a negative number.
Yes, uh-huh, please.
Mr. Smith, so far, I assume that we have not had any incidents at this school?
There's been one, and the word is out because the amazing principals of the north campus were able to rectify the situation very quickly.
And have repairs been made?
Repairs are on the way. As soon as the parents get that bill, the repair will be made.
Right.
You pay for something that you do, especially if it's intentional behavior.
Well, it's vandalism.
Absolutely. So we, we, we have zero tolerance as it relates to that.
Yes, and the other thing is, what's...
Do we have detention? We do, but not for that.
No. The other thing that I, that we can't fail to mention is with the new buildings, we have cameras stationed all over the place.
All over the place.
You know, so when an incident occurs, no matter what it is, right, there's a camera that's watching you. So maybe tell your students that, that their camera's watching you, so they'll be on their best behavior. Yes, just, yes, be aware, just anyway. So it is nice, though, to seriously have those cameras. Thank you, Mr. Smith. I just want to, again, do a heartfelt thank you to the stakeholders, the people who came in, who pour into our kids. The, you know, being an educator myself, been at my, my place for thirty years, and being an educator myself, I know that sometimes you feel like it can be a thankless job, you know? But our reward is seeing our students progress, you know? When I could take a person from zero to the end of the quarter, end of the semester, and they know how to do something that they absolutely didn't know how to do in the beginning, I feel real good. And when I know that, in my case, I'm doing college, and see that they get employment from that, makes me feel even better, that they got employed in their area that they were actually training with me for, you know? I trained you to do that, oh wow, that's fantastic. So that's the way our principals and our administrators and our staff feel that, that come here every day to do. There are too many names to name, but that's the way they feel when they, and the Board appreciates that. I just want to reiterate what Mr. Smith said about the October the fifteenth, the football, that's our last football game, it's also senior night.
Last home game.
Yeah, last home game, I'm sorry. Yes, last home game. And we also have volleyball going on right now. So if you're a fan of either sport, come out where you're blue and green, so that they can see you in the stands, and you're Wintonwood spirit wear, so that they're excited, you know, and they can rally around, you know, winning that, that game.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
I'd like to sneak in for a minute.
Yes, absolutely.
I have to tell you, there's more blue and green paraphernalia at games and everyday wear than, than ever before. Mrs. Denny has declared, what is our spirit day?
Fridays.
Fridays, all right? And there are some people that says, make it Monday through Friday, because the spirit of the district is absolutely contagious. As soon as they come out with their blue Wintonwood suits, I'm buying one, because I have one on order.
Isn't that one? That's not one?
Just one.
I thought there was one.
Where's your voucher?
I'm working on that.
Well, I can honestly say, just as a sidebar to that, I can honestly say that when, when I first came onto the Board, that was my big thing, you know?
That was her thing.
I would be like, we're at the football games, and then we would go to other teams, and we would see them in a whole sea of purple, or a whole, I mean, whatever their team color. You look over there, you don't see anything, and then we were in all kinds of colors. So I was like, let's do something to get that spirit wear going, let's give them a free dollar off of their, I was trying everything, and they're like, no, we're not gonna do that, we're not gonna do that. But we, we got there, we're there. And I, and I can't be happier, I just, I absolutely can't be happier. We're absolutely there. Just a few things around academics, parent-teachers conferences are coming up in the middle of October. Keep an eye out for that, for that communication. Our students will rise to the standards that we set for them. So if we set high standards, if we set high standards, even if they come up to here, they've already met what we want them to, where we want them to be. But the only way for everybody to know is for everybody to be on the same page, and that's through communication with the teachers, with the directors of teaching and learning, so that you know. Communication is key, and we want to keep that connection with the parents and guardians to maximize our students' success. The other thought, moving into that same, on that same line, is this quarter, second quarter is going to end October the fourteenth, so it's important for our students to continue to do their in-class and out-of-class projects, and keeping in mind that goals are dreams with deadlines, and dreams can become goals accomplished. So they have to focus on what it is they want and move toward that. Mrs. Denny mentioned the Family University for October the twenty-first. It is an event that is absolutely important for our students, so we want them to come out. This was, we've only done it, what, for three years? Is it three years?
Three, yeah.
So this is something new that's been implemented for, to benefit our students, so we want them to take advantage of it, and it's so much information that they can get. So keep a lookout for that. Also, in October, on, on Saturday, the last Saturday in October, we'll have ACT testing. It's an all-day kind of a thing, so if your student either has already taken it, wants to retake the ACT test, or take it for the first time, to kind of understand where they're going to land, so they need a better score, you know, to get into the college that they want. My kids took it more than once, but they got the score that they needed to get to the university and get the scholarships that they got, you know? So it's a good idea to do that. One other thing that I want to mention is that somebody mentioned about land use. Land use for all of the buildings that we have that we're no longer using, that's all part of the facilities update, and Mr. Denny will give us more information about the land use and the demolition of those buildings or whatever's going to happen to the land, so keep your ears and eyes open for that. That is, that is on the way.
Hey, Doc?
Yes.
There's one other thing. On the October fifteenth tailgating experience, there'll be two exciting events that you guys don't want to miss. There'll be a mystery percussionist and a mystery dancer. I'm not going to tell you who the percussionist is, but Mr. Denny is the mystery dancer.
He's going to be breakdancing?
He will be doing all kind of dances right there, half-ta, on the fifty-yard line.
I think Mrs. Denny said no.
Let you know, all right? All right. He said, don't throw money because the coins hurt when you, when you throw the money.
Okay. I don't necessarily think that that's really going to happen.
No.
The tailgate is going to happen.
[inaudible]
Yes, all right. Thank you, Mr. Smith, for that. The next item on the agenda is fourteen oh one, which is Board a motion to go into executive session, and there is a need for us to go into executive session, so Board, I'll entertain a motion at this time.
I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing the appointment of a public official and also an investigation of complaints against a public employee.
I'll second.
It has been motioned and seconded. Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Mr. Birdie?
Aye.
Dr. Culetti?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. We will now go into closed session. We will not take any further action when we come out of executive session. So with that said, all minds on this Board are clear on this row here. I would like to thank Tony with the Waycross Community Crew for videotaping tonight's meeting, and call the meeting of the Wintonwood City School Board of Education for Monday, September the twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one adjourned. Take care of yourself, your family, your loved ones. Be safe, healthy, and well.